By Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
A moment of silence and reflection. And after the moment of silence and reflection, we'll have our pledge of allegiance led by our board member Vice President Lake King. And if you can have a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. King. Can I make motion to approve the minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes from 410 Special Board Minute Meeting, 412 Special Board Minute Meeting Minutes, and 419 Regular Board Meeting Minutes.
Thank you, Ms. King. Can I have a second on that motion, please?
Second.
Mr. Sluka, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
This evening, I bring you the Board President's Report. Thank you for the privilege and the honor it is to serve in this capacity for the Garfield Heights City Schools. The Board of Education would like to commend everyone in the district for their safe, smooth, smart, and significant contribution in making our return to in-person learning over the last several months a relatively routine process. While awfully our district's operations appear to run flawlessly, we on the Board of Education know full well that it was due to the careful planning and dedication to keep everyone safe and sound. Your actions are recognizable, and we want to share our gratitude for everyone's hard work. Because of these things, the Garfield Heights City School is very pleased to be able to hold a number of traditional year-end celebrations that were either canceled or altered last year. This includes a special opportunity for commencement at Rocket Mortgage Field House in June, which allows for a socially distant, but very memorable graduation opportunity. Prom, National Honor Society, Senior Awards, and the various other activities at the middle school and elementary schools are able to take place as well. We are happy for the students, staff, and families. Please be sure to check the website for specific details on these events. The Board of Education continues making the sound leadership of the Garfield Heights City Schools its top priority. We want to be the best version of ourselves in order to properly and wisely steer the ship of the school district toward the fulfillment of our new mission, which is, as the heart of the community, the Garfield Heights City Schools fully prepares students to pursue their dreams and give back as engaged citizens and future leaders. How are we doing this? We continue to put an emphasis on board governance. The Board has hosted several retreat opportunities so that we can collaboratively brainstorm for the future and discuss important topics. The Board has placed a distinct focus on equity training with the intent that each and every student in their own unique capacity can be successful in our district. Our professional development endeavors keep us training, cultivating new skills, and dedicated to the students in our schools. I thank my colleagues on the Board of Education for their desire to see this district fulfill our new vision, which is to be a premier educational institution recognized throughout Ohio as fully preparing students to be leaders equipped with real-world skills to contribute to a global society. We expect the highest standards for our students and our staff, and this Board expects the highest standard for ourselves. Remember, June 4th is the last day of school. Have a safe and enjoyable summer. This concludes my report. The next item on our agenda this evening is our committee reports. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
Madam Chair, I have a city liaison report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. King. If you could share that with us, please.
Thank you. The 2021 Memorial Day Parade will be held on May 31st and will be kicked off at 10 o'clock from Maple Leaf Elementary School. The parade will proceed downturnally to Granger, where the route will turn to proceed through Jennings and Village at Marymount. The parade will conclude at the Garfield Heights Civic Center. The legislation to allow the rezoning of the Sunoco at the corner of Turney and Rockside passed during the primary election on May 4th, 2021. Congratulations to Garfield Heights High School graduate AJ Rose Jr. He was drafted by the NFL Football Team, the Minnesota Vikings. The next city council meeting will be held on May 24th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. You can participate via Zoom using the meeting ID With that, I conclude my report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. King. Is there any other committee reports this evening?
Madam President, I have a CBCC report.
Ms. Morrison, if you could share that with us, please.
Yes, Mennox. It was recognized in the April Student Connection. She is an adult student from Garfield Heights, and she is enrolled in the Full-Time Licensed Practical Nursing Program. CBCC has 12 students who qualified to compete in the Business Professional National Conference. Madison Mawanyani in the Medical Administrative Specialist II Program is from Garfield Heights, and she placed seventh in the ICD-10CM Medical Diagnostic coding and is a national qualifier. The 2021 Senior Recognition Ceremony was held, and you can view that on the website, CBCC's website. CBCC's High School and Adult Education Dental Assisting Instructor, Ms. Lisa Theodore, was recognized as a Fox Eight Thanks-to-Teacher segment, and she's been teaching there for 22 years. CBCC Instructor Mr. Jerry Coney was recently selected by Skills USA State Board of Directors as the 2021 Skills USA Ohio Lifetime Achievement Award recipient. Upcoming events, they actually, last day for seniors was May 12th. Thursday, May 27th at 6:30 is the CBCC Board of Education meeting. Friday, May 28th is those students' last day at CBCC. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison, for your report. Is there any other reports this evening?
Madam President, I have a report.
Ms. Thomas, if you could share that with us, please.
Spring sports are nearing their conclusion. Their state tournaments have either taken place last week or will be starting up and rocking up this week. Athletic related scholarships and major award winners are as follows. Joe Leonard, who won the Marley-Gleene Deal Forever of Bulldog Scholarship and the Trey Lewis Scholarship. Haley Sabinski and Edum Robinson, who both won the Bulldog Coaches Scholarship. Mikael Pottencamp and Treasure Bonzak Brown both won the Scholar-Able Award. Major purchases include porta potty rentals for baseball and softball as well as the football fields for the 2021 season. That is my report.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Is there any more reports this evening? Well, that concludes our committee reports this evening. Thank you, fellow board members, for your reports. Our next item on our agenda is remarks from the public on tonight's agenda items. If the public would like to make remarks, you can make those remarks by sending them to
President Daniels, it's H-Luka, G-H-Bulldogs.org. And do you have more, send me the questions, and we'll put those up and address some messages.
And if you decide, if you would like to make public remarks, all meetings of the Board of Education, of the Board, and the Board-appointed committees are open to the public. In order for the Board to fulfill this obligation to complete the planned agenda in an effective and efficient fashion, a maximum of 30 minutes of public participation may be permitted at each meeting. Each person addressing the Board shall give his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak or submit a comment, each person is allotted three minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have the opportunity to do so. Persons desiring more time should follow the procedure of the Board to be placed on the regular agenda. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the Board present and voting. Agendas are available to those who attend the meeting. The section of the agenda for public participation shall be indicated. Noted at the bottom of each agenda shall be a short paragraph outlining the Board's policy of public participation at board meetings. Those are the instructions relative to it, and you can email any comments to alsluka@ghbulldogs.org. A-Sluka, I'm sorry, A-Sluka. At GHbulldogs.org. The next item on our agenda this evening is the recommendations, the reports and recommendations of the Treasurer. Prior to us moving this item, we're gonna have...
Excuse me. Sorry, Captain, I kind of pushed right into that presentation recognition.
I apologize, Mr. Hanky. We'll now have our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. The Garfield Heights City Schools is winding down the 2020-2021 school year, and we are pleased to announce that many of our traditionally-held year-end activities taking place this year. The district is very excited to share that commencement will take place on June 3rd at Rocket Mortgage Field House in a safe and socially-distanced ceremony. Graduating members of the class of 2021 have been eagerly and patiently planning the details with high school staff, and we expect that a very unique and memorable commencement ceremony will take place. In addition, prom will be held on May 21st at Signature of Soul. A variety of other activities such as National Honor Society induction, senior awards nights, and various concerts and performances are underway. You should please check the website calendar for specific times and details. A reminder to everyone that the final day of school for all students in Garfield Heights City Schools is Friday, June 4th. To close, the 2020-2021 school year was one of great complexity but one of terrific triumph. I thank the Board of Education for their support and their diligence in leading during a global crisis. While others might consider things lost or deprived during such a time, I prefer to focus on all that has been accomplished. Our students continue to be educated with a first-rate learning approach and excellent educational staff. We successfully finished our community-based strategic planning process and identified what a portrait of a Garfield Heights graduate looks like. Our revised mission, which is, as the heart of the community, Garfield Heights City Schools fully prepares students to pursue their dreams and give back as engaged citizens that future leaders and these other tools provide us with the North Star in terms of a direction as a district. Our athletics program is successfully completed. We kept students safe and secure. Excuse me, safe and secure. We deploy new technology and deep cleansing measures in short order with Board support. The district continued leading on matters of diversity, inclusion, and equity with a variety of awesome community-supported programming such as DEIB. These are just some of the accomplishments made despite the environment around us, and it's what makes us bulldogs. Thank you to the Board of Education and to our entire community. Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hanky. Do anyone have any questions regarding Mr. Hanky's report this evening? Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the reports and recommendations of the Treasurer. Prior to us taking a vote on these agenda items, Mr. Sluka would like to make a presentation to the Board.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. At your place is a, what I call, a five-year forecast financial summary report. It is a, I don't want to say it's a condensed version of the forecast, but it's more of a summary of what's in the forecast that's on the agenda to be approved. This summary will also go up on our website along with the actual five-year forecast. So I just wanted to highlight a few things from the updated forecast and go over some of the things that have changed since November. The first thing I'd like to point out is on page three, it's a financial forecast summary, and what it does is it's a condensed version of the latest forecast. But I wanted to highlight the key areas on that page, and the key areas that I look at is the revenue surplus deficit and the ending balance. You can see in this year 21, the revenue surplus deficit is a negative 257, and 2022 a negative 215, and then all of a sudden, 2023 it's a negative 898. What does that mean? That means that we would be spending more than we're taking in. Now, the mitigating factor is we have ending balances in each of those years to offset the negative revenue surplus. But the key thing here and the key thing of the forecast is beginning in 2023 and then moving out to 2024, '25, once we start hitting those high amounts of revenue deficits, that's when we need to start targeting or taking measures so the district doesn't get into the area of 2024 when we start pushing negative balances and we've used up all our reserves. So what the forecast is really telling us is that we need to be mindful that in 2023, we're gonna have to address in 21, '22, we'll have to address that big revenue deficit because the balances won't be there to cover it when we fall back to that. So that's the telling sign. Those are the key areas. Moving on to the next page is just a summary of the revenue overview. The key issue we saw this year is two-fold. One is, and I've been putting that in the monthly reports, is that our collections of our delinquency taxes came in significantly lower this year. I attribute it to the COVID and the ability to pay taxes by businesses and everything else in the collection of delinquencies. And the other difference, the big difference I saw this year on the state side is that what we thought was gonna be the governor's cuts, we re-stated those cuts this year. So we actually, on the plus side, we got more money from the state than originally was forecasted for this year. Moving forward to page five, it's just a summary of the revenue notes, and then I highlight each area, just goes through the numbers and the percentages moving forward. But I put down underneath, if I saw the big differences, why that was there, and summarized along that, especially in the unrestricted state aid and the real estate revenue. The other thing I need to point out is that for the all-other revenues, the two, three main resources of the all-other revenues is one is the city income tax share from our tip and then those sub-properities that were in community reinvestment zones and that were abated. We're sharing, the biggest one, the driver right now is open front. We're sharing income tax in tune of about $117,000 a year with the city. The next one is the city U-TIP. The city U-TIP was anywhere at a high of like $500,000, and this year it was like $380,000. My forecast is $350,000. What it explained in the city U-TIP, which is a big one, is it could be anywhere, depending on where we're falling out at. Because what they do is they take the TIP, property taxes that wouldn't have paid to the schools. They put it into a separate account. City View was borrowed against court authority. They take that borrowing to build City View. They take the money from the TIP. They pay off whatever outstanding debt there is, and then that difference is split between the schools and the city. Problem is, is that back a couple of years ago, it was in receivership, and that property value went from $100 million down to like $20 million. So whatever taxes they were collecting, hopefully it was enough to pay off the bonds, or we would have been getting nothing. But we're still getting something. Now we're hopeful, I'm hopeful, that we're seeing a little bit of an increase with the city U properties of going more towards a distribution or housing-type places. I'm not sure how much tax money that'll bring in in tips, but I don't see that dropping. So the forecast is like $350,000 a year that I'm doing that. And then the last piece is Medicaid. So those are the three big-ticket items that I see staying consistent year after year. Final one is tuition. We've been doing very well in maintaining the tuition for special ed and some of the other tuition that we're getting from the state. So those are the big-ticket items. I don't see any change in legislation or anything else that would cause those to drop significantly. But then again, I don't see anything out there that's gonna cause those to increase significantly either. So those, usually, are all other revenues is remaining that one, unless something comes up. So that's the other big ticket of the other revenues. On the expenditure side, we have the salaries and benefits for purchase services. Salaries and benefits were pretty consistent, what was forecasted. The only issue in the benefit area, we saw a lot more people change from single plans to the family plan. People were getting married, having babies, just they... So they moved that, so that cost increased a little bit. Beauty of the medical was that we saw no increase in our premiums this year. Next year, we're forecasting increases, but you know, we'll see what happens. We've been doing pretty good in suburban health, this is our show. On the purchase service side, we saved some money from the forecast, and that was due to us only being in the school for half a year because of the, we've been doing teacher substitute costs with rental in around $550,000, almost $600,000 annually. That's what I projected for this year, forecasted. Half a year was only $250,000. Problem was, is, well, we should have gotten maybe more of a savings from that as I've been putting in my monthly memos, ed choice and the community school tuition was increasing exponentially throughout the year, and that was, really went way above what was forecasting. Forecasting was adjusted moving forward. I'm hoping and I'm forecasting those costs to level out, you know, we'll see what happens. So the other thing is, and I had to put this in the finance committee, right now legislative, the budget bill, there's been some talk of maybe shifting those costs and being funded directly from the state, which we reduced our costs. But the caveat to that is, if they take that money and do it directly from the state, are they gonna cut back on our state funding, fund now? So it's like, you gotta take, that's kind of like, so we'll see where that plays out. Page seven is the expenditure notes. It's just a summary of each of the expenditure areas, going through those. I'm gonna come up with the explanation of the differences in forecasting a little bit. And then pages eight, nine is the five-year forecast, the, you know, summary of the five-year forecast with the actual numbers. Page nine is really the three-year forecast. The board, previous board, this board, you know, doing a five-year and a three-year. I like to look at the three-year. It's not that I'm discounting year four and five, but there's so many variables that go into the first three years that really have a mitigating effect on years four and five, and four and five really could change. So I like to look at the next three years because those are kind of more known than years four and five. And the other issue I always say is that 65% of our funding comes from the state of Ohio. We do a five-year forecast, they do a two-year budget. So what's the budget gonna be in three years, in four years, in five years? I mean, I've got my forecast amounts in there, my assumptions, but, you know, we're required to do a five-year, like, they only do it two years, and the two year's coming up now. So that's why I like to focus on the three-year piece because I know where the state budget is and how much funding we're getting from them since a majority of our funding comes from the state. On page 10, that's the first page, does show the difference between the November forecast and the May update forecast. And there are some significant changes there. And the biggest one is, first one, real estate. You can see that the real estate forecast was because we, the legacy collections went down. So you could see that we needed to adjust the forecast back to account for the lower delinquency collections for this year. And the other sources is, I scaled back the investments. I scaled back some of the Medicaid, and I scaled back some of the tuition. And so we still have two months to go. So that could be a very low figure based on what we're seeing. So I'm hoping the Medicaid comes in, and then that'll just cover that, but you know, we'll see. On the expenditure side, you could see that salaries decreased a little bit this year. Not significant enough, given our salaries are roughly $25 million, so $120,000 isn't. So we scaled that back so I know. What I did is I took the actual salaries through April, and then I logged in May and June the estimated salaries, and it actually was a little bit lower. I did the same with all the expenditure categories because we're 10 months into the fiscal year. We have two months to go. So we're pretty much, I know with our last, barring any catastrophe, I know pretty much what our last two months expenditure would be. So we might actually put in actual numbers to come up with these. Like I said, the benefits, we saw some increase in healthcare, especially with the, some of the family plans, purchase services, once again. The difference was because the substitute costs were lower, but it could have been a lot higher, but the community school ed choice and the out-of-district tuition costs increased significantly naturally, and turned the boom down, my bad. And then the other expenditure amount that was lower is because our property tax collection fee was lower. The good news. The bad news, it was lower because we didn't collect the proper delinquency law, and then it went hand-in-hand. So the lower delinquency collections come from lower property tax collection fee. Unfortunately, it's not a one-to-one. So that was this year's differences, and that information's down below. The next page is, and I highlighted some of the areas because this is where everybody goes, well, what's the effect on the forecast numbers moving forward? Why is there differences between November? And the biggest one is that I increased state aid based on what we're, the budget talks. It wasn't a big increase, but I increased state aid based on the budget talks and what I'm hearing. But if you go to the expenditure side, and let's just concentrate on 2022, you're gonna see significant increase in the salaries and the benefits, or significant decreases in the salary benefits cost. It's because what ended up happening is that the talk of the wellness funding and the talk of the ESSR, what I did in November, I thought the wellness... the talk of the wellness funding and the talk of the ESER, what I did in November, I thought the wellness and ESER was going to go away this year, so what I did is those expenditure shifts, I took some salaries and benefits to qualify, I moved to the wellness, I moved some teacher costs and benefits to the ESER. I brought those all back in in November thinking that that funding would go away. Well, wellness we know is going to stay, ESER, we have ESER two and ESER three. So the wellness, I still kept that funding in separate, and I still kept those expenditures now. I still kept those out of the forecast rather than bringing them back. So I know they'll, they'll be funded through the wellness and ESER. So that's the significant impact in the two thousand twenty-two and salaries and benefits, and then what ends up happening is you move forward to keep, I'm, I'm assuming right now that wellness will stay for the four-year period and ESER will go until two thousand twenty-four at least. And maybe even carry over depending, so we're just going to keep moving those expenditure shifts and we're collecting them under the ESER and the wellness and take them out, back out of the forecast rather than put them in. So that's the savings that we get exponentially in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. From keeping those expenditures out of the forecast and them in the other funding. But what that did do is it helped us in the bottom line. In two thousand twenty-three, we're at once projecting a deficit. It was now a one point five million dollar carryout. Now, while that's good news, the bad news is out of a forty-eight, uh, million dollar budget, one point five million really isn't a whole lot of money, it's unpayable. So, but moving forward, um, that's the difference in the forecast from November to now, and that, that'll be up and it's, um, stated in the, uh, in the forecast itself. Last thing is, and there, it, I always like to caution because the issue right now is we're during this timeframe of doing this many update, there's a lot of things that are being out there talking, especially in the state legislature. Biggest one right now is the budget bill. So two things, um, House Bill one-ten was passed by the House. House Bill one-ten had the wellness funding included, the governor proposed separate funding, but House Bill one-ten had the wellness funding in there. Also, House Bill had the fair school funding or act formula in there from House Bill one, and they included that in their budget bill too. However, that's kind of gives me the impetus to increase our state funding in, in the forecast to a two point four percent average over the five years. What I caution is because that budget bill went to the Senate. Or their, I always say approval, modify, or present their own. Right now we're hearing that the Senate does not like the fair school funding act. They will remove it from the budget and who knows if they will come up with their own school funding amounts. It's been done before. Four years ago, it was forecasting five percent increases based on the House, the governor was forecasting, the governor proposed five percent. At this time, the House actually went to five and a half percent at this time. Senate got all of it, cut it to three, my forecast at five. Who knows what's, so whenever the school, either way, whatever they come up with the budget bill is going to have a significant impact on this, this forecast. Or, you know, it might be falling in line if it's a three percent increase over the time, depending on what it wants. The scary part of, with the Senate, and I'm just going to say this for the public, the scary part of the Senate is they're using as part of their analysis, the ESER funding that we get. Part of, uh, the ESER funding that we get, we really can't use it for operational needs. I mean, we can, but it has to be, and I'm going to put down this as my bullet point number three, is that there is a a line in the ESER three, or ESER two and ESER three that says, one of the categories, other activities necessary to maintain operations and continuity of services in, in local education agency and then continuing to employ existing staff. What I've been doing now is I've offset some salaries of teachers, um, to that line. And use that as the continuity of BBA and everything else. It passed the ODE audit this year. Problem is, there's been no guidance from ODE or the federal government of what exactly that line means and what is allowed. So we're going to continue with the assumption that we're still do offsets and everything else. Now, talk is, okay, you can use it for whatever. There could be a time that ODE and the federal government says, oh, wait a minute, no, you can only use it for these bullet points. I could see that happening with the ODE, I could see that happening even with the state auditor's office. As more people are asking questions, what can you use it for? What's legal, what's not legal? This is the only line, if you look into the bullet points I sent to the board, this is the only line that has a lot of and in beauty. So that's kind of another thing that's weighing out there. The same with the wellness funding. Governor proposed wellness funding, he significantly increased and his proposal of the wellness funding. The House took that wellness funding, incorporated the budget bill and remained flatline. But the issue being is wherever wellness, I think wellness funding is staying, but is wellness funding going to be included in the budget? Is well, that wellness funding going to be flatlined? Is that wellness funding going to be included in the budget and then they take away what they're going to give the school districts to make it the difference? I don't know what the Senate's going to do, Senate's a very scary place right now when it comes to, to funding public schools. Because, you know, the Senate Majority Leader is a big proponent of community schools and Ed choice. So, I put this in there not as a scare tactic, but as something that's unknown right now to school districts when they're preparing this updated five-year forecast. And that's why you want everybody to know that these three items, the significant impact that forecast. Just because it, it needs to be opted, not that it will, but these are the unknowns that we have at this time. Then the last thing is, and I always put that, in the, in the forecast is getting sent to the state that the board is approving tonight. Every area with the numbers that I have in that forecast has my notes and assumptions of how I arrived and what I'm looking at to arrive at those numbers. So if you're looking at the forecast, make sure you just don't look at the numbers, but look at the support and the explanation of those numbers. To see how I arrived at it. Now, I'm making assumptions based on past history, making assumptions based on what I'm hearing and seeing out there with the numbers. Not all of them come to fruition. So, you know, keep in mind that there are times, and that's what, you know, when I look at years three, four and five, something happened today that affects this year twenty-three, twenty-four. So, you know, we try to do the best we can with the latest information, but sometimes those assumptions really don't come to fruition, then we, we adjust and we pivot with the forecast. That's why the assumptions in the notes are integral, I always say an integral part of the forecast. And that's why you have to look behind the numbers of why you get them. Are, will the numbers be wrong in two, three years? Absolutely, some of them will be a little off, absolutely, because we don't really know for sure if we're taking our, our best guess based on not just pulling stuff out of the head, but based on the information we have at the time and in the past. So those are the three things on, on the forecast, especially in the May update. Come November, when the next forecast comes out, we'll have a lot more knowns. State budget bill will be in place, the wellness funding will be in place, we'll have a better handle on ESER as the administration and Mr. Anki will be, and myself, support and do a presentation on the ESER proposal for ESER two. Don't even know what's going on in ESER three, and we just got to get to ESER two first. So those are the type of things that we're dealing with right now, we'll have more knowns in the fall. Which will be a little bit better gauge of where we're at. And that's, this is the May update. Any, any questions? Yes?
Um, a question and a couple of comments.
Yeah.
And I just want to ask a question, um, in layman's terms for me to understand. So on page three, in two thousand and twenty-four.
Yes.
We're starting off with a one point five million surplus, but at the end of the year, um, we will have a sixty-five thousand dollar deficit going into two thousand and twenty-five.
Yes.
And that means that, um, in the bottom line, with that, um, deficit and our revenue being less than our well, being less than our expenses, we will be at about a two point million dollar deficit.
Right.
Okay, so I did understand it.
Yes, exactly right, and that's all things being equal today.
To then, yes, so.
So, so what's, right.
So my, I guess this is a question, typically going into the because they're unknowns, and so going into the second year of the VAMM, it's, we're a little more, we know a lot more, so it's easier, although there's still always unknowns, it's easier, am I understanding, okay? And then I also, um, am making the assumption that because of the new businesses that are coming into City View, we should not see a decrease in our TIF, we should at least see it even, not saying that it'll, it will immediately increase, but is that a benefit, those businesses moving into?
Absolutely, it, it's a benefit because the owner of City View, those businesses can only increase the value of that owner's property. Absolutely right, so, and when you see that, you know, and it all depends on where the debt is and everything else. Yes, do I think that we should see a little bit more in our TIF? Absolutely. How long that translates and depending on what they're paying and, and moving in there and the owner's value and, and, you know. I think the biggest key will be in three years when the revaluation of the property comes out again.
Okay.
Because he just got out of receivership and what he paid and everything else, and we don't see those numbers yet. But I think when we see the, the new revaluation, the three-year annual revaluation, annual update, that'll give us a, another sign that the economy and the real estate values are coming up. We're already seeing in the housing market, we don't see the increase until the new values come out because we're not chasing every set.
Yes.
Especially that, so that's going to be the telling sign of where we're at, but that is a good sign of the recovery. And doing that, and that's going to be also, you know, moving forward type of thing.
Thank you.
Because when the city, and I'm going to say this, when the city economy is going good, schools might not see the value because of the real estate is different than income tax, but that means people, now it becomes a community where people want to go to and then they start buying it versus just renting or just, you know, kind of like in their timeframe, so yeah, absolutely, it's a good thing for the, for, for our community.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have. Any other questions, Ms. Thomas? Ms. King? Oh, excuse me, Ms. Morrison. Um, I do have one question, Mr. Sluka. At what point, um, do we become concerned about possibly reaching out to the community for eleven, eleven? So as this, um, forecast shows right now, um, if this is where we stand as you project, um, at what point should we begin to see some cautious signs? And possibly the necessity to reach out to the community?
I think you start looking at, depending on, I'm going to say this, when November, when we see the state funding and everything else, I think after the November forecast is the beginning of that year, we start looking at the community about where we're falling out and doing something in calendar year two thousand twenty-two, or collection two thousand twenty-three. Depending on where we're at. But right now, it's, it's premature to say until we get a state budget in place and where we're going, so I think the forecast in November will be the telling sign of, of, of really the target date of, of what we're looking for, what we need to talk to the community about and what we're moving for, if, if there's something that needs to be done. Absolutely. I'm hoping, I'm hoping the state legislature steps up and does get the right thing. But we'll see. Senate has not been a friend to, um, urban school districts, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Sluka. With there, not being any more questions relative to the presentation, thank you so much for your presentation this evening and answering our questions. Um, if I can have a motion, um, ca- actually, can I have a motion, a, a motion and wave the reading of items?
Nine point two and nine point three, I have on here as seen.
Yep, nine point one and nine point two. So I'm looking for a motion to wave the reading of items nine point one and nine point two.
Two and three.
Two and three?
Yeah, one was my, uh, presentation.
Okay.
Should have been the other, then when I, yeah.
Oh, I see it now, I'm sorry.
Kind of like the other.
Okay. I apologize, please amend it to, um, can I have a motion um, to wave the reading of items nine point two and nine point three? In a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Sluka, that was moved by Ms. Thomas and second by Ms. Morrison, can I roll call, please?
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. King, I'm sorry.
Yes.
My bad, sorry, Ms. King. Getting ahead of myself, I was looking at the next one, my bad.
Yes. Can I have a motion for item number ten, resolution to establish finance and legislative advisory committee of the board, of advisory committee of the Garfield High City School District and Board of Education?
Moving, wait.
And can I have a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Sluka, that item was moved and waived by Ms., Ms. King and second by Ms. Morrison, can I have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. Um, can I have a motion to, um, move and wave items eleven point one, eleven point two, eleven point three, and eleven point three? That was eleven point one, eleven point two, and eleven point three.
Madam President, is there point of order?
Yes.
Is, does, um, Mr. Patton have any additional comments you'd like to make about the, about eleven point two?
Actually, uh, Madam Vice President, did I make comments about that?
Yes, sir. Uh, Madam President?
Sorry, Madam President, I apologize. About eleven point two, I, um, so this is our job description for our data data and accountability coordinator, I wanted to make sure I got it right. Um, this is, will be a new administrative position as we discussed in our work, uh, in our work session. Uh, we are very pleased to have this opportunity, will positively impact, uh, student achievement uh, and also, uh, really align with our strategic plan of being a data-driven district. We with Mr. Penn, if you want to expound on that at all?
Yeah, just, this person would work with various departments, um, at the board level, so
And the building level.
Yes, in the building level, so they would be an active participant in what we do, they would also be an active participant in the Ohio improvement process um, as well, as, as well as our phone leadership team and district leadership teams. So they would be an integral part of what we do, so every day focusing on data pieces to help improve student achievement.
Is there any discussion relative to add any other items in eleven point one, eleven point two, and eleven point three?
Eric, go to um eleven point two. Um, in the hiring document, in the doc description under essential function, there's just a question mark in here that I wonder if it should be removed.
Ms. Thomas, if I may, uh, we we are able um to uh uh remove typographical errors and job descriptions even after approval. Thank you for, thank you for that.
And this um, and at this position, will we post in this after approval?
Yes. This is an administrative position, this is a cabinet-level position. Um, we believe it's it's going to be an integral part of our school district.
Is this the first time the district has ever had a position um of this sort? Is this a?
Yes. Yes, yes, it is. And um, and and Madam President, if I may, uh, surrounding districts uh do have this position. We have uh looked looked at those things, we did not, uh, you know, look at this in a vacuum. We wanted to make sure that uh, and we wanted to look at outcomes from other districts, and it really has had a positive impact in other districts.
Thank you. There's not any more discussion um relative to the items outlining um agenda item eleven point one, eleven point two, and eleven point three? If I can get a motion and also a waiver of reading of these items?
I make a motion to move and waive the reading of items eleven point one, eleven point two, and eleven point three.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
That was moved by Ms. King, the second by Ms. Morrison. If I can have roll call, please, Mr. Sloopa?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Mr. Sloopa, I want to um abstain from eleven point one and guess for eleven point two and eleven point three, please. If I can have a motion and a waiver of reading of items number twelve through sixteen.
I'm moving away item number twelve through sixteen.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? With there being no discussion, Mr. Sloopa, that was moved away by Ms. Thomas and second by Ms. Morrison. Can I have roll call, please?
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
This is Daniels.
Yes. Mr. Sloopa, do you have any remarks from the public regarding miscellaneous school items or any other items this evening?
No, and it sent me an email.
Okay. Ms. Um, King, do you have any comments relative to tonight's meeting prior to our adjournment?
No, Madam President.
Ms. Morrison?
No.
Ms. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Sloopa, Mr. Patton, and Mr. Hanky, do you have any further comments? As I'm closing out tonight's meeting? With that being said, that closes tonight's meeting. Our next regular board meeting is, actually, we have a special board meeting, I think that's a work session, correct? On June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at six P M. And our regular board meeting for June is June twenty-first at six P M. You can find our meeting strength live on our Garfield High City School District YouTube page. And if there's no other announcements, can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at six fifty-five P M? So move.
Second.
That was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Thomas. But prior to um taking this roll call, Mr. Sloopa, did you know um Ms. Thomas um time did she enter into the meeting? Okay, thank you. With that being said, if I can have roll call, please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned as of six fifty-five P M. Thank you.